I might take off like that night.
I think we're...
You might be interested in coming?
We're just off. I think it's time to get started.
No, I think I'm gonna pass on that, but thank you for inviting me.
How are we doing?
Jessica girl, she's so cute.
I will now call to order the special city council meeting of October 17th, 2022. Joanna, will you call the roll please?
Mayor Leidy?
Here.
Mayor Protam Wolford?
Here.
Councilmember Witkovich?
Here.
Councilmember Hadameo?
Here.
Councilmember Kondo?
Here.
Councilmember Lufman Hiramasa?
Here.
Councilmember Goff?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session. One pursuant to section 4.5d of the City of Northland Home Rule Charter for legal consultation and advice regarding security measures. And two pursuant to section 4.5a of the City of Northland Home Rule Charter for personnel matters regarding the city manager's performance evaluation. Move for approval.
Second.
Please open the vote.
I'm not even there.
Please sign in so you can vote.
It was there.
Councilmember Goff, how do you vote?
Yes. Thank you.
I know. Just wanna take an oral vote real fast. We'll sign in. Give us just a moment.
My mouse is a spaz.
These new keyboards.
That is not mine.
You gotta do this as a race.
No.
I won.
Usually how this...
Dun! This mouse. There we go. Sorry Joanna.
No worries.
I know. You could just say yes for me.
Really?
Daniel Stretson. Yeah. Been here, right here making sure.
Okay.
Well, it would've been wrong anyway. Yeah, it would've been wrong.
Just let it happen, Meredith. Maybe I'll be here making noise.
There's like cats around every room. Have a bite. Everybody can have a bite.
All close up. An emotion to adjourn to executive session passes unanimously.
Great. We will adjourn to the executive session. Okay, so now we're gonna lock Ring Central and then we will proceed.
Okay.
Are you planning on down?
I will now call to order the study session meeting of October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Members of the public are invited to attend in-person city council meetings in council chambers on the lower level of City Hall. Public access to tonight's meeting is also available on the local government access channel eight for Comcast subscribers, on the city's YouTube channel online, and by telephone using the call-in numbers posted on the meeting agenda. Joanna, will you call the rule, please?
Mayor Leidy?
Here.
Mayor Proton Wilford?
Here.
Councilmember Witkovich?
Here.
Councilmember Hadameo?
Here.
Councilmember Condo?
Here.
Councilmember Lukman Hara Masa?
Here.
Councilmember Goff?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we have three items on our study session agenda tonight. They're all being led by our fabulous Director of Planning and Development. Hello, Brooke.
Good evening.
Um, I turn it over to you.
Great. Um, if I could ask one of the council members to share, uh, the PowerPoint, um, because our consultant is remoting in. And so just so that I can make sure that when I'm advancing the slides for them, uh, we're doing that. So, um, I'll keep the introduction here really brief. Um, I'm going to hand this over to Thomas Miller and Associates, the consulting firm that has headed up this housing study. And Erin is going to be leading you through this, uh, this PowerPoint presentation. And toward the end, I'm going to have our project manager and senior planner, uh, Sarah Dusenberry, uh, step up and, um, talk you through the next steps. So with that, um. Okay.
Can we do a double check before we? Yeah, okay. So can our guests see the, because now I can't see the people.
I can see the slides.
You can't, or you can?
I can, yes. I can see them.
Okay. I'm gonna just make an adjustment over here. Okay. All right, take it away.
Okay. Erin, if you would?
Sure, absolutely. Um, hi, everybody. Uh, thank you so much and good evening. Uh, thank you, uh, for, uh, the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm going to try to, uh, move somewhat quickly through our slides, um, uh, as we get going. Uh, please feel free, if you do have any questions, to stop us, uh, or there will be time for questions at the end of, uh, of our presentation here. I just wanted to start quickly by introducing you to the project, uh, in front of you. This, uh, was a housing needs assessment that was undertaken as part of, uh, an innovative housing strategies planning program grant from DOLA to investigate the housing strategies, uh, to promote and support affordable housing in selected areas around the state. Uh, Thomas P. Miller and Associates, uh, whom I'm representing today, were selected to conduct this study. I'll just quickly introduce, uh, our firm. We are a nationwide consulting firm at the intersection of economic workforce development. Uh, we are a fully remote firm with consultants around fifteen states, uh, and we have done work all across the country. We offer a number of services as seen here. Uh, I won't go through each line item. I do want to introduce quickly, uh, if you could go back one second. My name's Erin Finley. I am serving as the project lead here. Uh, Scott Sattler is our senior strategic advisor, and Connor Waddell is actually joining me as well, who, uh, handled a lot of our data and research. Uh, Connor, no offense to you, but I'm actually gonna just go ahead, um, but Connor will be here to answer questions, uh, throughout and at the end, if necessary. And please go on to the next slide there. So, uh, as we are focused on promoting and supporting affordable housing in North Glenn here, um, we did want to take, uh, a moment to highlight the main findings in our report. This presentation is just kind of a summary, uh, quick overview of our full report, uh, and for, uh, we are going to be separating that report into two main sections, followed by a set of recommendations. First off, we want to take a look at housing affordability in North Glenn, and we're going to look at that in two different ways. The first of those ways is to look at affordability as it is relative. North Glenn is affordability relative to the Denver metro region. And then also how, uh, how affordable housing is for North Glenn residents. So what you're looking right now in front of you is a quick overview of some of the, uh, changes in the median home sale price, not just for North Glenn there in the line, as a green line there at the bottom, but also as compared to some of the neighbors there in Thornton and Westminster. And also that top gray line is the Denver. In this case, it's not the Denver metro area, but actually Denver proper, uh, for the, for the information you're looking at. So as you can see, North Glenn is, uh, consistently, uh, below its two neighbors that we've highlighted here, and of course considerably below Denver proper as well. That being said, there has been a very steady increase in the median home sale price, as you can see. Uh, most recently, uh, this chart ends as of May twenty twenty-two. Um, excuse me, it has dipped, uh, in those last three months since then, and settled around that four hundred and seventy to four hundred and eighty thousand dollar range is the median home sale price, and seems to have kind of stabilized a little bit lower than the five hundred you see in front of you, but not much lower in that five, uh, four hundred and seventy to four hundred and eighty thousand dollar range. Um, and anyway, the, the point is that you can see that despite all that, still considerably lower, uh, than Denver and some of those neighbors to the north. Uh, next slide, please. So, uh, but we said it's, it's not just home sale prices. Of course, we don't just want to look at owner occupied units, but also want to look at rental units as well. So North Glenn is also, uh, much more affordable when you look at, uh, the median rent as well, also considerably lower than the neighboring communities. And in this case, it is the Denver MSA as opposed to proper. So even taking the entire MSA, North Glenn considerably less, uh, on, uh, you know, on the median is about seventy dollars less per month, uh, than the entire MSA. So we understand then that both, uh, ownership and rental prices, monthly rental prices are lower than the neighbors, uh, and, and the entire kind of surrounding areas. And if we just look on the next slide, we can actually kind of, uh, also start to look at that relative affordability. And we see that that's somewhat offset by a difference in household income. So the higher line there you see is the Denver MSA, and the green line, uh, below is the median household income, uh, trending from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty in the graph you're looking, uh, in front of you. So you can see, uh, typically, you know, around seven to nine thousand below the MSA. Uh, there was a dip there in twenty nineteen that has started to kind of, uh, you know, return to something close to, uh, that around nine thousand dollar range where we expect it to be. So we consider then also the, when we've looked at the homeownership, we've looked at the cost of, of rent, but we also do see that incomes are a little bit lower. So when we kind of try to take these two ideas together, if we can move to the next slide, please. Um, we want to look at the, how those monthly housing costs are in relation to the percent of monthly income. So what we're looking at is the median, um, uh, you know, housing costs here as, uh, as a percent of income. It's important to understand for our purposes here that, uh, the Department of, of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, defines cost burden as spending more than thirty percent of your household income on housing costs. So what we see here is that green line, that's everybody, uh, in North Glenn. The median, um, housing cost there is less than the thirty percent threshold that HUD suggests is, uh, defines as cost burdened. That yellow line there at the bottom, those are homeowners and owner occupied households, you know, considerably less than that thirty. But if you look at the blue line up top, you do see that there is, uh, a higher incidence of cost burden for renter occupied households. And it's actually a little bit higher here than it is across the entire MSA. So what we want to start to look at now is what is causing, uh, either rent to be, uh, you know, a problem for so many, um, residents there in North Glenn, specifically in the renting community. Uh, as we have noticed that costs are lower, but because of course income is lower also, we are, um, seeing some issues of affordability in the renter market. So we wanted to take a little bit closer look at what is available as far as affordable housing in North Glenn. So we can move to the next slide, please. We first want to take a look at rents. Now, we have noticed that despite what you saw on the previous page, on the previous slide, rather, North Glenn does have affordable rental housing options. In fact, North Glenn, as you see, has more affordable housing by percentage of its available rental units than either the neighboring cities or the MSA. So we've chosen this eight hundred dollar a month threshold. Eight hundred dollars a month rental would be affordable according to that housing cost burden definition we talked earlier from HUD, uh, that thirty percent threshold. So an eight hundred dollar a month apartment is affordable for a household making up to thirty-two thousand dollars a year. So that is relatively a low income household, and over fourteen percent of rental units in North Glenn, uh, would be affordable for that household making up to thirty-two thousand. That's roughly one in seven rentals in North Glenn. So while we're not suggesting, you know, there certainly may be room to add additional affordable housing, there is some reason to look at maybe some other factors, um, as, you know, that is affecting maybe the lack of available affordable housing in the city. If we can go to the next slide, please. So on the next slide, uh, we're going to shift our attention from just those measures of affordability into a little bit of deeper dive to see what kind of housing does exist in North Glenn, to try to maybe square, uh, the circle, if you will, and trying to understand we have a fair amount of affordable apartments already in affordable housing, as we've noticed, and yet we're still seeing some issues with maybe access to that affordable housing. So we're going to start to take a little bit of a closer look at the existing units in North Glenn. Next slide, please. So on the left side of our bar chart here, that's that rent under eight hundred dollars a month that we've already seen on the previous slide. But we've also noticed that actually, uh, there are fewer kind of, uh, rental units on the high end of the price range, that fifteen hundred dollars a month or more. So while roughly forty percent of renter occupied households in North Glenn can afford rent over fifteen hundred dollars a month, only twenty-seven percent of those rental units appear in this price range, considerably less, as you'll notice, than the MSA and those neighboring communities in Thornton and Westminster as well. So we are seeing that there seems to be, um, like I said, plenty of, well, not maybe plenty, but a good number of affordable rental units in the city and considerably lower, uh, percentage in those higher price ranges. Next slide, please. This brings us to this concept of this notion called filtering. Filtering is a, is a concept, uh, that we talk about in housing, uh, uh, policy that suggests that the addition of actually market rate housing can actually increase affordability. So the way this happens is that higher income households have the option with the addition of market rate housing to quote, "move up" into newer housing stock, typically maybe at a slightly higher price point than existing housing stock because it's brand new. And actually, this moving up, this filtering, actually leads to the greater availability in affordable housing. And we'll, we could take a quick look as we continue through our slides here about kind of how that happens and how we might affect some of this, uh, in North Glenn to maybe open up some of the available affordable housing that does exist already. Next slide, please. So we took a clo- a bit of a closer look at actually kind of, uh, the tenure and maybe the density, uh, you might call it, uh, of some of the housing that is available. So the number of, this is the housing units, the count of it by the number of units in the structure. So you can see a vast majority, almost sixty percent of housing in, uh, housing structures in North Glenn are that single family detached unit. Uh, we have another, uh, eight and a half percent there of single family attached. And then you see a very small amount in this middle section, this, this kind of middle density from two to nine units in the structure. Very few there, all added together, less than ten percent, as you can see. And then you start to see a little bit more, so slightly larger increase as we move up into those higher density units. So when you, what, uh, what jumps out to me as somebody who, who studies these, uh, housing is that, um, we have a lot of single family and a decent amount of that high density and really nothing in the middle. So actually, over ninety percent of available housing units, of existing housing units, I should say, in North Glenn are either single family or over ten units. So less than ten percent in that, that middle density, two to nine unit range. Uh, next slide, please. So as you could kind of see in that graph, there is quote, "a missing middle." So for those of you who aren't familiar with, uh, this term, uh, the missing middle refers to this set of medium density housing options. They were one time very popular in America before World War Two. Since then, they've largely disappeared, however. So what is that missing middle? It's duplexes, triplexes, courtyard units, couple of other in that, in that middle density option. And those tend to offer lower housing costs, lower maintenance, and that means that they meet a wider variety of options for a variety of lifestyles. And that means that they meet a wider variety of options for a variety of lifestyles and uh lifestyle and life cycle stages. Uh so we see this a lot. North Glen is not unique in this, uh especially uh based on the time that North Glen saw a lot of its development of housing. Um the that's this middle density had kind of fallen out of uh Vogue, if you will, kind of fallen out of uh favor. And as suburbs started to pop up, of course, you see, as is the case with North Glen and so many suburbs around the country, uh a a vast majority of the of the uh construction and development was in that single family detached. And again, you can still see the marks of that uh in North Glen and and many other suburbs. So when we talk a little bit about this wider variety of options for different lifestyles and more specifically for life cycle stages, I want to talk a little bit about housing, uh the life cycle housing stages here on the next slide. So uh we do have, I, there's not necessarily a defined set of ha- life cycle housing stages. Uh there's a variety of different studies that look at a couple of different things. We've put together this set of six that kind of uh encompasses most of of the studies that are out there. I'm not going to go through every single one of these in great detail due to uh you know, time constraints here. But it is worth noticing at the first end, you have students single living. These are singles or couples in their early twenties, no children, often with roommates, and then they tend to prefer rent and inexpensive apartments. As you go up to number two, these are coupled professionals. Those are uh either first time home buyers or move up renters, moving up from that uh entry level uh renting situation. These are often married, cohabitating in their mid twenties to thirties. Uh some households include children, but many do not. And that's where you start to see that kind of first time home buyer, that purchasing that modestly priced single family home or the upscale rental properties. Moving on to number three, these are the move up home buyers, if you will. And they are mostly married, cohabitating, late thirties and forties. This is where you start to see households with children. They tend to look for the newer, larger and more expensive homes from the previous stage. Uh stage four is the settled households. These are mature families, maybe emerging empty nesters, uh typically couples in their fifties and sixties, maybe ch- uh children have left home or individuals who don't have children. This is the point where we start to see uh people tending, they'd still prefer oftentimes to own their homes where possible. But some are starting to consider renting at this point, maybe moving out of the homes that they had raised their family in. And some are starting to prefer those lower maintenance housing options. Fifth, you have retiring and downsizing. This is where you start to see those empty nesters, younger independent seniors, typically couples and individuals in their late sixties and seventies. Uh still able to live without significant health or lifestyle constraints. And many still do prefer to earn their homes, but you have an increasing number moving to low maintenance options or an increasing preference for rental options as well. Looking quickly, also moving on to number six here, this is what we're calling comfortably aging. Uh these are older seniors, an increasing number of people living alone in their mid seventies uh or older. You do have a higher percentage of females at this stage due to shorter life expectancy among males. Uh there is a higher likelihood of need to leave a single family home due to either health constraints or a strong desire or need for a lower maintenance option. So uh thanks for bearing with me as I as I walk through those six quickly. Um so data show that North Glen is largely a first time home buyer market. Uh so really kind of meeting the needs of number two in our chart here. And that there is, there are options at the stage six, that comfortable aging. But there's missing options. There's not a ton of options we see at that ages, stages three, four and five. And this is where we do feel like that missing middle uh is kind of creating some bottlenecks and some issues for for mobility uh across the housing mix. So um we do think that uh you know, we do think that those first time home buyers that do exist in North Glen uh should be a priority to try to keep these families around. Sometimes we see that without maybe a lot of options in that move up home buyer range, some families seem to be moving out to other communities, other areas of the MSA. We do think keeping those families should be a top priority for North Glen's leaders. Uh they do tend to represent kind of a lost investment as soon as they leave, don't often come back. And we also see uh the for the ones that do stay, maybe in those first time home buyer houses, there's not a lot of options for downsizing either. That all kind of comes back to that notion of the missing middle we talked about uh just a little bit ago. So we move on to the next slide. We do want to talk a little bit about what an uh diversification or a a greater diversity of housing supply does mean. Studies are showing that uh with the greater diversity of housing options in the sup- in the housing supply, uh that actually a a couple of things happened. We've highlighted a a number of them here where we improve racial and cultural diversity. You have, you give offers uh options for seniors who wish to age in place, but maybe don't have the ability to kind of maintain a single family detached home in the same kind of way. We also improve a city's ability to weather economic downturns, and this is absolutely critical here. Research shows that the communities that have the higher percentage of their housing supply tied up in single family detached homes, that those cities are uh maybe not, maybe maybe unsurprisingly, but more prone to in economic downturns, having higher foreclosure rates uh and greater difficulty weathering economic downturns uh in those instances where there are a high percentage of the supply being taken up by single family detached homes. So quickly moving on to the to the next slide here, um we do have a quick summary of the findings that we've talked about here today as I've tried to move somewhat quickly through them here. Uh though, so the housing in North Glen is affordable compared to the surrounding areas. However, affordability is still an issue for many renters in North Glen. And we actually think that while additional low cost housing may be needed, increasing the number and diversity of market rate housing will actually have a significant uh effect on affordability in the area as it opens up ex- you know, uh access to the existing affordable units as people might have the opportunity to either move up in their homes or even uh downsize as well when you create additional options in in the market. So finally, improving the diversity of the housing supply will also increase uh racial and economic diversity, retain existing residents and families that already have been a good investment for the community, and also finally improve the city's economic sustainability. Uh so to move on, our last stages, we actually have put so together some recommendations. Before I turn into them, I do want to mention that um these are uh recommendations that have been put together to be something of a toolkit of options that are available to spur uh you know, affordable housing or access to affordable housing in North Glen. There is no ideal ratio, and this is absolutely critical to understand and something we talk about in in all of our housing studies. Um what's most important is kind of coming to terms on this notion of a shared vision for a city. What is it that you as 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 local leaders, as government officials want to see North Glen be in the future? Uh is that the same as it is now? What kinds of uh vision is planned for the future? And then uh once there's some kind of sh- idea of a shared vision, some of the tools that we're going to present to you are options to consider to help North Glen achieve those uh that vision and and that idea for the future. Uh so on the next slide, we do have a couple of special considerations that are in some ways uh help uh helping to uh create or or cra- uh excuse me, helping to kind of shape some of the recommendations that we're putting forward. I just want to note a couple of them here quickly. Uh so North Glen's housing ecosystem is a bit of a complicated one. There are a number of structures that shape the tools that are available to address some of these housing issues uh that we are going to be identifying, uh that we've identified here and will be looking at recommendations for. So first, after the Carl's Farm and the Civic Center uh developments, nearly all developments will be infill development moving forward as as North Glen will be have be effectively built out at that point. Uh so do you um so when we look at infill development and creating some recommendations around how we might look at infill development, we do understand that due to that timeframe when most of North Glen was developed, right in that kind of sixties, seventies range, um a lot of the infrastructure that is in existence uh is, you know, kind of uh no longer really matches uh the needs of kind of modern development. And so in a lot of cases, there's costly infrastructure upgrades that would be needed for future housing development projects. So that's a little bit of uh, you know, some constraints that we want to want to think about when thinking about infill development or the future of housing in North Glen. Third, um I know that we we do know that there's been a recently revised uh UDO there, the Unified Development Ordinance. We know that you've been working on that. Uh and there've been some changes as recently as as last year, I think the most recent update was. And part of that was to increase opportunities for additional flexibility uh and with particular attention to single family zones. Uh and then finally, as I mentioned before, there is no ideal ratio, so identifying um what the priorities are for North Glen. If you want to continue to serve your existing market or maybe make efforts to fill in some of those missing pieces, as we mentioned above. So um you know, there is always opportunity to really try to identify some consensus or some shared vision for what the future will be there in North Glen and then kind of take an assessment of the uh the options that are available to you. So we did identify a couple of tools that we think would be um things to consider there for North Glen as we move on to the next slide. So first, we want to talk about this notion of overlay districts. So uh overlay districts are um these districts that can be kind of, well, overlaid on top of existing uh zoning to create maybe some more flexibility in use by right. And um they can kind of go over areas that are maybe cover areas that are in some places commercial and in some places residential and set up some boundaries or some guidelines to kind of create uh existing flexibility or maybe existing uses. So we do think it would uh, one recommendation would be to review the zoning maps and maybe consider redesignating some commercial or residential zones into these overlay districts. The benefit of overlay districts, and and we can get into them, uh if you have any additional questions, are that it doesn't require a complete rezoning uh to increase some of the options that are available for some of the land use there. We also think that to with the addition of new, I think there's uh definitely one uh of the uh I call it the the purple line, but the north commuter line there um into and and beyond North Glen was one stop in North Glen and then two that are easily accessible to prioritize transit oriented development. So what that might mean is maybe some higher density options along um or nearby those access points for commuter rail uh potentially uh different kinds of overlay districts that might allow some very transit oriented type of development in and around those uh those areas. Second, um we do think that there's probably a reason to look, if we go to the next slide, to think about some targeted incentives. Because we have identified, we have seen that there are some higher infrastructure costs associated with infill development due to some of the age of the existing infrastructure there in North Glen. We do think there's opportunity to provide some targeted incentives here. One of the reasons that we think that that might be useful is that due to uh potentially high infrastructure uh costs in updating uh the the infrastructure in infill development, whether that's, you know, drainage, um wastewater, infrastructure and things of this nature. Some of those costs might be um potentially limiting to the kinds of developers or the kinds of developments that you might be able to attract. Um and if the city council uh wants to have a specific uh maybe influence or has an idea for the kinds of development that might be most beneficial to the city. If, for instance, uh you know, it'd be beneficial to uh try to address the missing middle or uh whether that is looking for certain kinds of maybe mixed use development. Uh the council's really in a position to uh potentially influence the kinds of development that goes there by by means of providing some targeted incentives to help maybe direct or influence the kind of development as opposed to just maybe opening up to the to uh, you know, what developers uh might come in on their own. And we see this a lot in communities where uh, you know, new development opportunities are coming, developers come in and typically you get a lot of the same. You get a lot of what's already existing. They've run some maybe numbers on their end and that tells them, well, there's already demand for the kinds of existing uh development that's already there. And so you just get a lot more of the same. So if council uh or government leaders there want to have some uh influence in the kinds of development that takes place, we do think targeted incentives might help uh to uh, you know, bring developers in and do the kind of development that you're looking for to help achieve, like I said, that 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 long term vision for North Glen. Secondly, there are some options that you might want to consider for creating more of these move up options for home buyers. Uh this in this case might be incentivizing homeowners to improve their existing properties. There are a number of ways uh that that we've seen this happen. We do think that, excuse me, um Renaissance home improvement loans, which are uh zero percent loans often uh offered uh you know, by the city or or by commu- uh a relationship with a local bank, for example, that um you know, can encourage or incentivize homeowners to make updates, to make new um renovations to their home, maybe improve their lots, maybe that means um, you know, maybe uh an addition or maybe that means, you know, bringing some other things up to uh market level. Um and you can incentivize some in some of those improvements by offering uh low rate loans, which we do see uh have seen be successful in a number of places as well. Specifically in uh some some suburban areas uh that that are typical or or uh s- somewhat similar to North Glen as well. So moving on to our third and um kind of final um set of recommendations here. Uh we do think there's, despite some uh recent uh changes to create flexibility in the um in the um Unified Development Ordinance there, we do think there's some opportunities to continue to expand some options in those single family zones. Uh the first one, we think there might be some greater variety of use by right permissions on single family zoned lots. In some cases, that might mean um uh as we see here on the second one, maybe allowing some middle density development on on those zones. Uh we do think that even with existing um uh restrictions as far as uh units per square foot or something like this on existing lots, that there are maybe some opportunities to create possibilities for duplexes or triplexes or some uh additional kinds of uses on those single family lots to uh potentially create some additional supply. And then also, uh we do know that part of the changes made to uh the ordinances were to allow for new possibilities for things like accessory dwelling units. Um but we have also seen that really not many um uh residents there in North Glen have taken advantage of some of those uh additional flexibilities and additional uses. So we do think there's the possibly uh the opportunity to create some awareness campaigns to advertise maybe what some of the benefits or some of the flexibility that could uh be allowing for additional ADUs, also increasing some of the supply there in North Glen. additional ADUs, also increasing some of the supply there in North Glen. So that was a quick overview. We're happy to kind of open up to questions, but I do want to hand it over, I think Sarah or maybe Brooke, would like to talk about some of the next steps that are going to take place with our plan here.
So really quickly, I'm wondering if this is a good opportunity for questions before we move to next step. So Councilmember Condo?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know if my microphone is on, but thank you, Aaron, for presenting. I'm just curious, on slide 57, I think your data ends in 2020.
Correct.
And I don't know if you had any extrapolation into the future, because obviously rents have gone up substantially. I think I heard this on the radio this morning. The suburbs here in Denver, rents were up like 20 or 25%. So I was wondering if you had a refresh on that.
Yeah, absolutely. So they they have been up. The the data that you're looking at right here is from the Census Bureau from the American Community Survey. That was a five year estimate for 2020. There are one year estimates out for 2021 from the Census, and they do show an increase. Without maybe diving too deeply into some of the nuances of Census data, comparing the one year estimates to the five year is kind of problematic for a variety of ways. We prefer a five year estimate. So this is the most recent data or estimates rather that are available from the Census. You're absolutely right that rents have increased, not of course, not only in in North Glen, but of course, all over the the Denver area as well, and really all over the country. We do still feel that despite those increase to rent, that there are still, you know, significantly more affordable rental options in North Glen than really any of the areas around North Glen. Now, does that mean that $32,000 is still, you know, a household income that, you know, there's still as many under $800 a month apartments? No, we we do expect that that number has dropped, but we still find and and feel that North Glen is considerably more affordable than any of the areas around it.
And one more follow up question, Madam Mayor, if you'll indulge me.
Yeah, please.
So I'm just trying to visualize this in my mind's eye, so I'm trying to think about some examples of surrounding communities. Are we looking at having duplexes kind of multi level, just like you might find in what was formerly known as the Stapleton Development, now called Central Park? Or in the areas just west of downtown Denver, whether we're talking about Mountain View or Edgewater, where, you know, people have taken old homes, torn them down entirely and built up duplexes or three three unit family homes? Or is that kind of the recommendation here?
That is one of the tools in the toolbox that that we are putting out on the table for council to at least understand that, I believe, jump back here. When we look, when we look at this table, I'm sorry, hold on, this one right here, the housing by number of units and structure, that's our missing middle in terms of what we talk about. And that is one of those, what you just described, is one of those aspects to that.
So this will be requires some sort of a kind of a mind shift in our getting our residents comfortable with having multi story homes, then I would assume we'd have to.
So.
Part of our vision is to think about how to get people comfortable with that idea.
And I want to mention that part of the idea with this with this whole housing study is to fold this into our comp plan and have this as an adjunct to the comp plan exercise. More importantly, throughout the last several years, there's been a lot of concern about where we are in the market, and are we affordable? And so this is kind of addressing a couple of different items and issues and concerns that have been brought up over the years for for city council. By no means are is staff or the consultants suggesting that any one of these is above or beyond better than the other, but merely that here's what's on the table for us to further explore.
Thank you.
You're right. Mayor Pro Tem Wilford?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of questions. First, it seems like we spend a lot of time talking about all of the different, I guess, portions of our our homes and rental properties that are affordable. Do we have any sense of what the vacancy rates are and how that factors in? Because it's nice that we've got this stock of affordable housing, but if we don't have any open affordable housing, then obviously there's resident displacement. And so I'm curious how that kind of factored in to the study and if it did.
I don't know specific necessarily to rental versus homeowner occupancy, but or single family. Looking at our vacancy rates, though, as a whole in housing, we're only at about 4% on our vacancy rates. That was a slightly older estimate, so it might be more or less, but it's around that number in in general. I do kind of, based on the kind of presentation and data, it does show that we, most of ours are filled, because there is that still that kind of burden of finding that affordable housing units. And my assumption would be that most of them are filled at this moment.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then my second question is more to the consultants on page 70 around some of the targeted incentives. It sounds like there are a lot of potential loans or city financing that we can provide, potentially partnerships. I'm just curious how equity factors into some of these recommendations, because I know for a lot of homeowners that may not have the best credit or the physical ability to put in the work on their home, that these loans may not actually help move the needle. And so I'm I'm just curious how equity is factored in.
I'll take a first crack at that, and I'll let the rest of the teams chime in. I think one of the things to bring attention to council is the the first time home buyers program through CHAFRA. As you know, we get about $2 million each year in private activity bonds. CHAFRA, over the last two and a half years, has, I think it's around $140 million of first time home buyer and also home equity line of credit servicing. So I bring that up is because I think that really does speak to your concern of what you're you're talking about. I think it's also, yet again, another thing that we can further explore in terms of how can we further enhance that. I will say it's remarkable, the amount of money that CHAFRA does service into North Glen, and largely it's because we are the metro service area transitional housing that that Aaron was talking about earlier, from rental to first time home buyer or starting families. So I think that's a really interesting dynamic that we that really came to light for me in this exercise. So does anybody else want to add anything to that?
No, I mean, I think I think that that is important, and you're absolutely right. So if curriculum around to the question is about how does homeowner equity tie into the notion about about access to these loans?
No, I'm more interested in if if there are other, I guess, other recommendations beyond just providing low cost loans for homeowners to improve their current properties, right? Are there other ways that we are there other potentially, you know, targeted incentives that we can think about? Because when I think about equity as a whole, I think about there only being one sect of the population within North Glen that would be able to financially access some sort of low dollar loan. Does that make sense?
Yes. Yeah, it does make sense. I'm trying to think about, so other ways to improve existing housing stock outside of low rate, yeah, outside of these kind of improvement loans. Is that that's the question?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there are a couple of things that that we have looked at. As far as that, I nothing's really kind of jumping to my mind, but we could definitely continue to look into that, I guess, about some other options.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any other hands. If you want to go ahead with next steps.
So this is definitely kind of a little bit more in relation to our next steps with the grant. So kind of looking at that, really wanting to get your feedback as to kind of what are those recommendations or incentives that you may want to prioritize, so that we can start looking at developing policy language around them. Because as kind of a requirement of the grant, it is to hopefully, or at least put a really good faith effort into adopting policy that furthers affordable housing within North Glen. So really, then after that is kind of getting your feedback, taking it back to the team, developing that kind of language, bringing it before you guys again, and planning commission if needed. And then really looking to have that kind of final policy language potentially completed by the end of Q1 next year. The grant does allow for a little bit of leeway, as it does need to be spent down by September of 2023. But we're kind of wanting to keep this momentum going and seeing if we can kind of continue work and off of your recommendations. In terms of kind of the comprehensive plan, as Brooke mentioned, this will be wrapped into it, and it's given us a little bit more detail and information in terms of housing, which has been really helpful. And for us, we're looking at kind of how these recommendations can be incorporated into the plan, likely to be kind of take carried out through our sub area planning as our kind of next steps of implementation. As Aaron mentioned, some of these do require maybe some further study to see how feasible they are within North Glen. And we really think, looking at the kind of sub area or our areas of focus that we've kind of brought up, looking at how those can be applied in those areas predominantly. So really making sure that they're included and kind of part of this initial implementation of the comprehensive plan. That's kind of twofold what's going on for pretty quick, if you have any questions on that.
Yeah, Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, you know, you're looking for some guidance. I definitely think it would be worthwhile to explore the overlay district concept a little bit more. And then, and that was on slide 69. I would say specifically, you know, item one. And then on provide targeted incentives, both items one and two.
Okay. I don't see any other hands. Anyone else want to weigh in? Councilmember Goff?
Thank you. I think that, you know, I'm not sure if we're trying to decide where to put our resources or if we couldn't just continue to move forward with all of these. One, there are a couple of comments that I have. One is that I know and have heard from several seniors about, and I know some who have moved out of North Glen because they couldn't age in place, they couldn't downsize successfully. So I do, I, you know, just personally, in my own experience with talking to residents, know, have seen that that's an issue. And then I also wanted to just say to our our consultants here that I did really appreciate the the assessment report that you gave us. It was a little tricky reading it online, because I think it was a PDF of maybe a real brochure. But I did appreciate looking through that very in depth, helped me understand a lot about where we are. I think we need to do whatever we can, because we are really limited on expansion, you know, being landlocked. So I would say can move forward on all of these.
I am having a really hard. Councilmember Harmio?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can think of a couple of the move up incentivizing homeowners improve their homes, a lot of what a council member Wilford has talked about before, how she's upgraded her home. And I'm sure that's the that's looks like the future. So I mean, I think that would, you could speak more to it since you're an expert in the field, but I feel like that would be, this would be really, really moving up and being a step forward. Could you talk a little bit about about what you have going on at your home and what your...
Councilmember Harmio, are you talking about putting energy efficiency first and getting off of fossil fuels? Yeah, I mean, I think that those are all certainly things that there will be funding provided and available through the Inflation Reduction Act that's coming to Colorado soon. But I think, you know, I think that's a way to improve our housing stock and right and reduce our carbon emissions. But I think what we're talking about here is trying to identify ways in which we can increase the variety of housing stock that we have in the city. And so I think I don't think it's an either or conversation. I think it's an and conversation, if that helps.
Yeah, exactly.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilford?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I I really appreciated the assessment. I thought there was a lot of good information there. Obviously, nothing really surprising by any means. I guess, you know, I'm interested in exploring some of the different recommended strategies, but I just, I guess I just want to say publicly that I don't know that I'll ever be on board with allowing, you know, a single family residential area to be scraped and duplexes put on. I just, I just don't know that our, I, maybe I'm wrong, and I could be pleasantly surprised, but I just don't know that we would have the community support to be able to move forward with something like that. And so I would be really interested in any opportunities to really focus on some of those commercial spaces where we have an obscene amount of concrete and asphalt. I'm thinking about the marketplace in general and and just the reality that there really could be some opportunities for housing to be put in over there. And so I just really want to see us maximize, looking at some of those commercial areas where residential could potentially make sense and and could really help do a little bit of place making. But just, I I don't know that I can get on board with the the changing up the residential character and and feel of the city, because I think that's something that a lot of our residents really pride themselves on. Thank you.
So I'm looking at slide 69 or page 69, the prioritizing transit oriented development. That makes me wonder about the over by our light rail station. That's a piece of property. Do we have any updates on that?
The property owner is still slowly working through some site environmental challenges that they are trying to get through. It also is required in coordination with the City of Thornton as it relates to floodplain. But they are, they are looking at probably medium density, multifamily residential.
And then I also, I just have, I don't know, curiosity questions about the targeted incentives for the options for move up home buyers. I think if I can just speak to my neighbors, when they move up, it's not because of their home, it's because of the city. And so I think that is a broader conversation we need to have about services that we provide. I think our rec center makes a big difference, but, you know, when I talk to former neighbors, they've moved up for community reasons, not necessarily changing the housing option. Or they can afford a brand new home in a neighborhood with children. And neighborhoods that are aging don't offer as many opportunities for kids to find friends in the neighborhood. So I don't know that the incentives actually change that. That was just a thought I had. I think the the assessment or the inventory exercise makes sense. Yeah, so as far as the next steps, so city council providing feedback, I mean, is that that's tonight? And then you're going to move forward with the next three steps? Great. Awesome. Okay. Councilmember Brown?
I would like to echo Mayor Pro Tem Wilford's comments on the duplexes and things like that, and letting families basically take homes down to the ground. Were you here, I think you guys were here when we had the big uproar in Ward Four, because they wanted to take a house and split it in half. Do you remember that?
I remember them.
Okay. And the residents were not supportive of that thought. And I know that it has come along in time, but I I have a real hard time with that. I don't think I could support it. I know that Councilmember Malika, when she was here with us, had stated our big yards and things like that. But this community doesn't, in my own personal opinion, does not react well to change. We're very, we're very steadfast, you know? I have had a couple of conversations with people about, you know, what do you think of this? Um, I have had a couple of conversations with people about, you know, what do you think of this? That's why they're, the ones that I've talked to, that's where they're not popping the roofs off their houses like we thought that they would, like, jump at to do. It's, it's, they would rather go buy a different house that already has what they want in it than pop it up. My thing is by giving you po, giving you feedback and helping you move forward, I just, you know, I mean, I don't want to waste your time by misdirecting you, you know? Um, I can't see where we actually have with this little land as we have here, right? Um, where we have much flexibility in the things that we can do. I know that we've had conversations with Brooke in the past about, um, doing a mixed-use down on Irma, just as an example. You know, and I, I, I just don't have a good feeling that those are good things that our community would accept. But I'm willing to look into that, you know? But I can't think of, although I did enjoy the presentation, I do not want to downplay, um, the presentation at all. I want to state that I've not seen an $800 rent here, um, other than, um, have you? I've, I've not seen one here except for the low-income apartments on the corner of Community and, um, Community Center Drive and Malle. Um, and those are, you know, subsidized by the state and the owners. Um, and I think the house prices were a little, you know, because this was so old, that we're not talking, we're talking about other things now, right? We're talking about inflation. We're talking about salaries not matching in. So we can offer all the loans, you know, help with loans because we obviously can't be a mortgage company. We don't have that kind of money. Um, but there are other things driving the community right now. Um, I don't really have, if I were to tell you where to go next, I'm going to be really honest with you. I don't know, I don't know what, you know? Yeah, would I like to get some more housing and some more duplexes, something like Reunion or something in? But where? You know, with the property that we do own, the, the developers get to decide what, we have no control over that. And then we have all those apartments that are supposed to go in over where the old Global Village was. And I'm thinking, you know, same thing there. We don't have control over those things, so I'm really struggling. I just wanted to let you know that I'm struggling with what you want from me. Because I can look at the, the presentation, go, okay, I'd like a number four and a number three with rice, you know, that kind of a thing. But I don't know really what would be most beneficial for the city that we live in and beneficial for this grant.
Right. And I do think, kind of, I think maybe to assuage some of your concerns, um, since this is going to be rolled into the comprehensive plan, these recommendations are looking at being rolled into the plan. So there is going to be community engagement around those. And so I may maybe get a sense of kind of what our residents think. Also, again, as I kind of mentioned, once the comprehensive plan is done, we are going to look at those kind of sub-areas or areas of focus, is kind of what we're calling them in the plan, um, that might look at. Irma is actually one of them, that is looking at kind of that mixed-use, that idea. So we will be, there will be engagement and kind of analysis further with that to kind of understand, does mixed-use make sense over there potentially? And kind of what could work and what our residents could like, would like to see. So there is going to be still that engagement piece to kind of come and kind of continue with this. This isn't going to be definitely a one-and-done since it will be into the comprehensive plan. Um, so we do have some of that kind of engagement and that kind of resident input going around these, um, the recommendations, as well as then further pass the comprehensive plan as well.
Yeah, I have nothing to give you. I apologize. I'm not used to being speechless during-
I know.
-these kinds of, but I have nothing to give.
Well, and I wonder too, when I'm, I think as Councilmember Brown said, the community doesn't love change. Um, but I think there's also the, the tapping into the community because I think some of our multifamily housing options or duplexes and triplexes are not in the best condition. And so residents could put the two things together, right? Like, we don't want more of that because we have that concerning neighborhood already. And so how do we, how do we, number one, support those neighborhoods that are currently in that state to improve them and reinvest in them in some way? But also not have that be the correlation for residents, right? Because we have some concerning properties in North Glen that I'm wondering if, if we need to dedicate some attention to in some way. I don't know what our role would be in that, but there are areas that we see more crime. And residents all know where they are, so I, I don't know. I mean, I feel like this is a separate thing to that, and yet it's connected. Um, because lower rents sometimes go hand-in-hand with specific neighbor.
Councilmember Goff?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just kind of want to follow up on some of what, um, uh, Councilmember Brown commented on. And I totally understand the, the, the perspective she gave about residents not wanting to change. I have heard some of that, but I, I do think we really should not cross anything off our list. And it do, we do want to engage the public. Um, are, are the demographics of North Glen have been changing. And we do have, um, you know, a lot of younger residents, as this report was pointing out. Um, so I, I don't think that, uh, you know, just, I wouldn't just automatically assume that people are dead-set against, um, you know, making duplexes or, or dividing houses as was suggested before. Simply because there, those are also, uh, you know, a higher-density living is actually greener and safer, or better for the environment kind of living situation because it's not as much, um, uh, you know, like, it's a smaller carbon footprint, I guess is what I was trying to say. But that's just my comment on, about that. And then in terms of the, I totally agree with the ma, mayor's comments too about some of our duplexes or townhomes or whatever you want to call them that maybe have kind of a bad reputation right now. And I even wanted to, to know if there's, you know, something we can do about, you know, rental properties. Because even houses that, um, you know, single-family homes that are, had, were bought by somebody who lives out of state or whatever and they're renting it, those people are not going to have any, or much of an interest, I don't think, in, uh, doing some of these loans to improve the property. Uh, they, because they just, it's real easy money for them not to do anything at all. So I don't know if there's some way to reach out to, to that, that particular demographic or that group of people to, uh, you know, see what, what kind of incentives they would be interested in to improve those properties.
Were we clear?
Yeah, I don't, oh, Councilmember Harmio?
A quick question. Uh, what would you do with a, a property that has had a fire? I don't know if it's structural fire, but there's one in my ward. What are some options for properties such as that?
In terms of what they can put back or kind of money?
What they can build back in that, in that area.
So that would, I mean, it would be based on kind of what's allowed in the kind of UDO, the Unified Development Ordinance, the kind of, what are those uses that are allowed by, right? And it's most likely going to be, um, a single-family house if it's in a neighborhood.
Okay.
Um, some home occupation type stuff, but primarily building structure-wise, it's most likely going to be a single-family house.
Okay.
Okay.
It's going to have to come by what we currently have in the UED.
Okay.
That one's a long way down the road.
Well, I do not see any more hands. Um, Erin and Connor, thank you for your time tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, here we are. Waste optimization study.
Waste optimization. Okay. I'm just going to kick this off really quick and then I'm going to hand it over to the team members here. Um, Rob Weber is going to cover the first couple of slides, and then we have Lori from LBA Associates that's going to carry us through the majority of the presentation tonight. Um, so with that, I will hand it over to Rob, and we will just jump right in.
Thanks, Brooke. You going to do that?
No.
Okay. Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Leidy. So, um, this was brought to council, uh, on your request, uh, a year and a half ago. There was some interest from council to look at different things we could do within the city to try and increase our waste diversion rate. And so we hired, um, LBA Associates, Lori who's here tonight, um, to evaluate this. And so she has evaluated it, and we're here tonight to kind of give you some ideas of what we think can happen as we go forward. Let me move on to this. So this is why we're here tonight. Uh, several people, and then we did a small survey, and there were several people that said that they would like to see more recycling and possibly some composting in the future. And they liked the idea that that provides some environmental benefits to the entire city. So the background, where we are today, right now, we have curbside trash and recycling. We have ninety-four hundred single-family units. Um, right now, the trash containers are purchased by the homeowners. Um, they can buy a sixty-four-yard container for $58, and they can buy a ninety-six container, or ninety-six-gallon container for $60. And they own those, they own those cans. Um, the other side of this slide here, the ancillary services, that includes everybody in the city. Uh, multifamily homes, um, even some businesses get advantage of this. Uh, we provide two landfill days, um, through our contract with Republic Services, where any resident can go out to, uh, Republic's, uh, landfill out on Tower Road, and they can take a truckload, um, for free, um, provided that it doesn't have any items that are not allowed. Um, we do, uh, one dumpster day this year, and we were, it was probably the biggest one we've ever had. Can't remember off the top of my head, but we had several tons. It took us about a week to clean up the entire amount of, um, stuff that people brought out to the M&amp;O facility. We have two recycling drop sites, and I, if you remember, about a year ago, we closed two of them down because it was being abused pretty bad where people were leaving trash, and we were getting a lot of, uh, contamination in the recycling containers. And then we did reopen them. Uh, we have a fenced-in facility over at Northwest Open Space that is, uh, actually has someone that, um, is onsite there about, I think it's thirty-two hours a week, including Saturday, Tuesday through Saturday. The other site is out at M&amp;O where we take tree branch, recycling yard waste, and we also have a recycling container for cardboard and paper, glass, those type of things. Right now, if you are a single-family home, we have a flat rate for both trash and recycling. Recycling's really kind of free because we don't charge for those carts. Um, but right now, it's $16 per house, household regardless of the cart size and the number of carts you have. We allow up to three trash carts and one, as long as you have one recycling cart. So a maximum of four, um, and it's $16 regardless of if you have one, three, or all four. Right now, the collection schedule is weekly. We pick up trash, and every other week we do recycling. We're hoping that would change at some point in the future where we get more people recycling, and we could change that to some type of a, a different opportunity for us to pick up more recycling. I think, I know in talking with some of you on the one-on-one meetings, uh, it seems like a lot of people have more recycling than they do trash, and I know that's true for myself, but there unfortunately for a lot of people in the city, that's not true. The single-family units right now subsidize all the ancillary services that were on that previous slide. Um, and there are a few other services we provide that are ancillary services. For instance, if you're a single-family homeowner, you can have two bulk pickups for free, up to ten items, um, two times a year. If you decide you need a third one, then we charge you $100 for that third one, uh, when we come out to get it. Um, the, uh, so when we're saying that it subsidizes, that $16 that every homeowner pays, pays for all those ancillary services. We don't have additional charges for the free services like dumpster days, the free pickups that you get, um, and the, uh, two, uh, days that you can go out, or the single day that you can go out to the landfill. Um, right now, the recycling opportunities, it's an opt-in program, not an opt-out. So when, uh, new residents move in, they have to tell us that they want a recycling can. Um, most people do want one, but some people do opt out or don't opt in, um, to get that. Uh, sixteen percent do not, um, opt in at this point. However, some people don't use those cans for recycling. We don't see recycled cans every time that we pick up. Some people don't use recycled cans all the time. The recycling, right, um, we do do some, uh, we put stickers on cans if people aren't recycling correctly, if we see things that aren't allowed in our contamination. Right now, our contamination rate is about 10%, and so we get dinged for that when we take recycling to the, um, to the, uh, facility out in Commerce City for recycling. So that does cut down on what we get as far as a rebate back. Um, for two years prior to this, we were, we were paying for recycling. We are back to a point where we are getting some money for it, but it's not a whole lot. In the past sanitation fees, uh, this is, uh, as far back as I can go, um, was $12.25 in 2009. And in November of 2016, council approved a, a flat rate of $16. And there's no policy in place for anything future. So if we were to see increasing costs like tip fees at the landfill, things like that, then we would have to come back to council in order for us to raise that rate for, for the, um, for constituents. So, uh, oh, that, the other thing that changed back then, excuse me, the other thing that changed, we used to have the trash, uh, sanitation guys used to pick up the bags and throw them in the back of the truck. We went to sidearm now. We are fully sidearm, so we're picking up the cans so the guys don't have to get out of the truck when they're actually throwing the trash. Um, every once in a while, we do, if they miss or whatever, we like to pick that up. And we're pretty good about making sure that we don't leave a mess when we do that. Current allocation in the city right now, as you can see, I don't need to read all this to you, but you can see that the primary, uh, is forty-two percent of all the single-family units have two-gallon, uh, uh, trash carts. And, um, forty percent have one gallon and only six percent with a sixty, sixty-four gallon. Those really aren't very popular. Um, since it's only a $2 charge, why not get the bigger one, right? So, um, the SFUs with, uh, three ninety-six gallon is 12%. So there's not a whole lot of people. One of the problems with this is because these, the constituents that live in the city all own their carts. Um, if somebody moves, they can give one to their neighbor, so we don't really know when that happens. So somebody could be getting three trash carts, but they only paid for one because their neighbor left them two. Those type of things that happen out there. Let's see, uh, the seventy-eight-hundred households by percentage, uh, ninety-four percent have, uh, one recycle cart, and there are six percent that have two. So I think at this point, uh, I think this is where you take over, correct Lori? I hope, because this doesn't look familiar to me from what I was supposed to. So on my turn, this is Lori Batchelder, and she is our consultant we've been working with for about a year and a half, two years. You can probably set that up there.
I'm going to knock it off. Thanks. Okay.
Thank you, Lori.
Thanks, Rob. Thanks, council. I'm glad to be here and talk a little trash. Um, and I'd like, if you, if you can bear with me, I would like to back up to this slide and just share a couple of extra points. You know, like any good consultant, I want to take something that staff provided to you very clear and straightforward, and I don't want to make it more complicated. So, uh, there's a couple of key observations I just would like to underscore on this slide. It's, it's a little eye-opening, I would think, to all of you to see that, uh, ninety percent of your residents have opted for the large trash cart when they could have small, and that over fifty percent have said, heck, I'll have two, maybe I'll have three. Um, and I want to point out that in, in our experience, communities where the fees are flat and there's no incentive to do anything different, and you can get additional trash carts for no extra cost, this is not uncommon. I mean, if you've got the space in your yard, in your garage, why would you not have an extra trash cart or two for those times when you have a lot of trash? We see people sharing with other residents who maybe don't have enough on a particular day. We see people using trash carts to store other things, so it's not uncommon. What we do see in these communities is when a pay-as-you-throw program is brought in, these numbers change quite dramatically and fairly quickly when there's a pricing incentive and we give folks tools to perhaps trash less by recycling or composting more. So I think those real numbers are important, and we expect them to change. The other key component is the column, the service received as percentage of total. If we understand that three large carts is 100% of what you could have for capacity, then those folks who opt for just one or two large carts are really only using one-third or two-thirds of total capacity. And if you opt for just a medium cart, you're at the 22% level. So you're just using a fraction of what you could have. And the kicker is that everybody is still paying exactly the same price, $16 a month. So, uh, Rob used the term subsidy when he was talking about the single-family units at $16 a month, subsidizing those ancillary costs for multifamily units. We're also seeing a subsidy here in reality, where households that don't generate as much trash are literally subsidizing households that generate a lot of trash. Uh, and that may be because they need it, or they just have gotten used to it as habit. And when you compare the trash cart allocation to the recycling and you see that nearly everybody who could have two or three recycling carts have opted for one, it's the flip side. And it underscores the fact that we, we, we trash, as a matter of course, and we recycle- And it underscores the fact that we, we trash as a matter of course, and we recycle when it's convenient, when we think about it, when we've got the space. We also are aware that a number of residents of your 9,400 residents aren't even aware that they could have a second recycling cart or a third one if they wanted it. So important to know and part of what we're hoping to change up as we go forward and optimize. So this is where Rob left me. Inasmuch as you folks have had a chance to read the report, you've had a staff memo, you've seen these slides, I, I don't think the seven benefits are going to be anything new to you. I would like to point out and remind you that the city of North Glenn does have a landfill diversion goal in place. And that goal is to divert 20% of your citywide waste stream as soon as next year, 2023. But where, where you sit today is about 12% and actually you're probably in the high single digits. Because as you can see from the pie chart in the upper right, collection from single family units is, is 12% recyclables and organics. But when we stop and consider the amount of contamination that's in those streams, it's closer to nine or 10%, perhaps even as low as 8%. The silver lining though is that there's an awful lot of opportunity in that big brown slice of pie that's trash. And if you look at the pie chart in the bottom right, you can see that 20% of what is going into our trash are recyclables that could have been taken out in the program that you have in place today. 26 and upwards is food and yard waste that could be diverted through organics recovery programs and there are others there. So this is great opportunity and lots of reasons to do it as you can see on the left. So with that in mind, what we identified in our study, what we've talked about with staff for a number of months now is, is a couple of phases with different approaches. The more imminent and more critical recommendation is a concept of residential pay as you throw. And I'd like to take a few slides and drill into that a bit. I know we've talked about this as early as late 2020 and the one-on-one conversations we had last month. And once we finish kind of hashing that and digging into the weeds a bit, we'll come back and touch very briefly on a couple of latter recommendations having to do with optimizing the drop sites that are in place now and some organics recovery. So residential pay as you throw, I imagine most of you are getting pretty familiar with the concept. A number of communities call it different things, but what it amounts to is a volume-based trash program for residents bundled with recycling. What the heck is that? It means instead of prioritizing a large trash cart for folks, and that's kind of the default for people unless they think to ask for something else, we instead put in front of them multiple options of different sized trash carts and we tier pricing to go with it to create incentives on behavior change. So let's look at this just a little more closely. This graphic I find fairly helpful and most of the good stuff is on the left. So instead of kind of giving that large trash cart on the upper right, the 96 gallon that Rob referenced, we make sure people are aware they could go for a medium, which is more 64 or a small, which is 32. And we kind of call these affectionately our 1X, 2X and 3X trash cart sizes. All of these would be bundled with a large recycling cart as a matter of course. So in the new program, there'd be no opting in, it would be automatic. With rare exception, 100% of your households would have your recycling cart. They wouldn't have to go through the exercise of thinking it through and asking for it. The pricing with these bundles would also be staggered with fairly significant differentials between them to create a real pricing signal that what we're trying to do here is get people to trash less by recycling more, by using the drop site, by doing organics recovery, by using the, the landfill and the bulk dumpster days. So we try to have the differential between the small, medium and large cart, small, medium and large as well. We did an analysis of what these numbers would actually be. What would the cost be? How would it compare to $16 a month? And we had to make a number of assumptions. Rob set me up in good shape for this multifamily use of the ancillary services he referenced. And our feeling was is that we drilled, as we drill into the residential programs, the curbside and their service, we wanted, we wanted to look just at single family. So for the purpose of our analysis, we pulled the multifamily cost out and looked at a what if, if they paid their own fare for the services they were using. Our analysis showed that the multifamily units would need to pay about $1.20 a month to keep using the services they had now, a little less than $15 a year. Single family will need to pay that as well, but we wanted to look at it separately. We also had to make some assumptions about how the service levels would change. What are people going to pick? It's a little tough to know, but we have a pretty good understanding of the North Glenn program and we've looked at some 8,000 pay as you throw programs across the country, many of which are here in Colorado. And our assumption going forward was that a strong 30% of your residents would stay at the large trash cart size. Hopefully many of them would go from three to two, maybe even to one cart. And the rest of your residents would move to a medium or small, a full 70%. And I will say that's a big change from where you are now, but again, it's not unusual for a program that has free extra carts and suddenly changes their pricing system. So if we want to take a look at what this means in terms of actual cost to single family units in North Glenn, this is what we see. For folks who moved to a small trash cart, that 32 gallon bundled with recycling, their monthly bill could go as low as $7 a month from 16, keeping in mind that $16 a month was a price that was set in 2016. So today's cost, at least 16. The medium trash service would be as low as 13, $3 less than the current price. And the large trash service would go up by as much as $2 as you see here. The 7, 13 and 18 includes the $1.20 for the ancillary services. So all the same services, but our curbside program has changed to the pay as you throw strategy. I do want to acknowledge in the interest of full disclosure, that households that do keep more than one trash cart and that the large, the large size will pay more than $18. Ideally, from the perspective of what we're trying to accomplish with pricing signals, their price would be 18 times two or $36 a month, which is yes, significantly more than the $16 now. Again, I would emphasize in these programs, we don't see a lot of households choose to do that. We find that very quickly those households get down to one large cart or even smaller as they get that pricing signal and they're educated about the other opportunities about what to do with their trash. And I will also share with you as part of an implementation strategy, staff intends to look at, should we have exemptions or waivers for certain hardship cases? Should we provide funding for low income housing that need to have one or more large trash cart? So that has been discussed in detail and implementation will help us suss out some of those mitigating factors. Rob mentioned cart, the cart deal and the fact that you own your own trash carts here in North Glenn. Under pay as you throw, what the sanitation department proposes to do is buy those trash carts back and pay residents a prorated amount depending on how old they are. Reuse and rehab those carts and redeploy them if they're in good working order and then backfill with new carts depending on who ordered what size. The cost of buying back carts, buying new carts, redeploying and exchanging is all included in that pricing above, that's $7, 13 or $18 a month. So it's all inclusive. The goal here is to keep costs net neutral for the city, to keep the sanitation enterprise fund intact. And again, the one thing we have excluded is the multifamily ancillary services. What would this look like? What are the steps? Obviously it would be phased. This is a change. I've heard two or three times tonight, this community does not like change. So we would propose taking anywhere from six to 10 or 12 months to make this happen. Initially, staff would need to do some outreach with the community. Why do we need this change? What does it mean? How do I do it? Which size do I pick? Once that has been established, sanitation will work through the cart exchange, buyback redeployment step, adjust the billing system, it won't be a flat $16 anymore. And as I mentioned, evaluate the waiver exemption and perhaps funding for low income housing. Sanitation is going to need, need to rework their routes. We expect the trash quantities to come down with this program rather dramatically in many cases and recycling to go up. So there needs to be some reallocation of routes. And on an ongoing basis, we've included in our pay as you throw monthly funding, a line item in the budget for education, ongoing education to help us with the issue of contamination. You know, it's no good getting 12% diverted if only 9% really counts. You have a lot of trash in there and if we're going to increase it, we need to do it right. Lot of benefits. I think you've gleaned most of these. By sending people the pricing signal, we want them to trash less and there's lots of ways to divert their material, whether they reduce, they recycle, they compost. And that helps us with our greenhouse gases as well, the city's energy action plan and your sustainability goals. At the same time, it gives residents a choice they don't have now. If they don't need all that service, if we have a small household or we have a household that does a lot of reduction or recycling, they don't need as much trash, why should they pay for it? What if it is more like a utility, like water, sewer, foam, gas, electricity? You pay for the level of service you need. They have that control and they have a chance to adjust their own bill. At the same time, we're introducing fair pricing in a service equity. We don't have small households or small trash generators subsidizing large ones. We're going to be able to maintain the integrity of the sanitation enterprise fund and we will continue to have measurable outcomes. We can come back to council and, and tell you exactly how well it worked and progress that was made, issues that need to be addressed. So with that slide, we thought we would take just a breath. Lori could stop talking and perhaps have a discussion on pay as you throw. I would like to just remind you that we do have three quick slides with three additional optimization recommendations we want to give you before the end. So we just want to save a minute for that. But I think we were ready to take questions, have a discussion.
Councilmember Goff?
Thank you. I actually have a few questions. So I'll just start and go in order. The first one is, I think you briefly mentioned something about possibly moving the recycling up to more than every other week. But I'm just wondering, like, it seems to me that if people are going to downsize, get rid of some of their trash cans or, then they will be doing more recycling and that that needs to take place pretty soon because otherwise what, what are they going to do? I mean, I know in reading the, you know, the details that you gave us, the works there, we're expecting people to maybe be able to take these to the drop-off sites and that kind of thing. But is that really going to be their only option if they have more recycling than, you know, then can be picked up?
So the question is of capacity and the need to go to weekly recycling.
Yeah, like when, like when will, are we expecting that to be phased in or how, how does that get triggered to make that decision?
Well, first of all, residents do have the ability now to have additional carts. We considered briefly the wisdom and the feasibility of going to weekly collection. But given the quantities that are collected now, even with pay as you throw, our feeling was that in the first couple of years, there will not be enough additional recycling or citywide to justify the cost of more frequent recyclables collection. We are certainly hoping that over time that will continue to change however, and that sometime in the, in the midterm future, weekly recycling will be economically viable and will make sense to meet the needs of the, of the public. But it will be a little bit of time before that happens and it would be a bit premature to make that change at the onset unless recycling increases much more dramatically than other communities that move to pay as you throw.
Okay, all right. Well, it's good to know. So my next question is, what happens when these, when people, you know, decide, try to downsize to smaller trash cans or a lesser number? And they do fine for, I don't know, a couple of months or something and then something happens and they've got more trash than they can fit in their one trash can? I mean, are we expecting them just to like put them in plastic bags and it's just sitting out for animals to get into or like what are their options?
Rob's going to take this one.
So something that's not really highly publicized that we do right now is we do offer a secondary pickup. If, for instance, if you have a lot of guests or something and you go over what your normal trash is, for $10, we, they can call into the trash hotline and we will go pick it up. We'll send somebody on a route on their way out to the landfill to go by and pick up that extra pickup and we just charge $10 for that. I don't know if we actually really charge the $10, but I do know that we do go pick up the extra trash. But we do have the ability to charge the extra 10 if we, if we did.
Well, and that is a good thing to maybe give up, put out to our residents as we're trying to explain all this because I'm sure there's going to be glitches and confusions and, you know, residents trying to figure out what, how to make all of this work.
Yeah, I think that, to your first question about how we do this, I think that if we own the trash cans and we actually know what we're picking up and we have a way to identify that, then we can actually calculate based on the size of the cans, what each truck will hold so that we can do the routes better. And then if there is a transition like that, like Lori said, you can get an extra can, you can get up to three cans, but if you decide to cut back, we still offer that extra pickup if they wanted it.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, then my last question at this point is, and I remember there was something about it, but I wasn't exactly sure. If people are like raking up their leaves or, you know, doing other kinds of yard waste, is that, do they have to be in like paper bags and then the, the resident has to transport them to whatever site that we're going to designate for that? Is that how this is going to work?
Right now, what we would ask residents to do, if they wanted to use a large plastic trash bag and they're picking up leaves and stuff, we would just ask them when they go out to the yard waste landfill that they just dump it and take the plastic bag with them or throw it in the trash can that's available out there. That's usually not too hard to rip the bag apart or just dump it out when you're doing that. If they left the, the plastic, we would pull it out anyway at some point because we have the sanitation guys work every Saturday during the summer months or actually nine months of the year, we have people there on Saturday. So if there was contamination in the yard waste, they would pick that out.
Okay.
We would rather the individual did it themselves, but if they didn't, we would take care of it.
Right. Well, so then I guess the reason I asked about that is I know that the, you know, Home Depot and Lowe's and all that, they sell, do sell the like paper bags, I guess they're called. Now, if, if something came in that, do they still need to empty it out or is that all good?
If it's recyclable, it's fine if they leave it in there with the yard waste. That's not a problem for us. I mean, there's cardboard and paper sometimes get mixed in and that's not a problem.
Yeah, I just can foresee, I was trying to think this through, you know, based on my own experience because if there are a lot of people who, you know, just are used to putting yard waste in their trash can, then they are really going to have, this will be a new experience for them. They're going to have to learn how to do it.
Right. I think that depending on which way we go with this, that it would open up opportunities for us as a city to offer those type of services where maybe we provide bags or the recyclable bags or the boxes that people could use or buy them from the city as opposed to going to Home Depot. And we could make that a part of the program if we decided to go that route. If that was actually something that was, if there was enough requests for that, that, you know, enough volume for that, that's something that we could look into as far as providing that service as well.
Okay, well, good. I want to say that I do, did appreciate the presentation. It's very well thought out and even listening to some of the answers here, it's pretty clear that, you know, you guys are going to be flexible and the city can respond to, you know, residents' demands or questions or confusions. And I really do think this is a good program and I'd like to see us move forward with it.
Councilmember Condo?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'll, I'll just relate an experience since I lived in Tempe, Arizona. They, they actually implemented their SMART program back in 2018. So I'll just offer a few anecdotal's and maybe that's a good model to look at is they do collect now the recyclables weekly. My recyclable bank can is bigger than my trash can. So I, I think that is a psychological sort of encouragement to kind of think smarter and just throw out the non-recyclable stuff that can fit in the smaller can and, and use the recyclable more judiciously. And then to answer Dr. Goff's question about organics, at least again, anecdotally, in, in Tempe, they offer organic waste pickup. And that happens, I believe, every other month. So if you have large tree branches and things like that, you can put that on the side. So if a resident doesn't have a truck, you know, it's easy for them to trim their trees and, and have that waste removed. So I would, first of all, I think this is great. I'm in support. Second of all, I'm just offering up another city that did it as a model and perhaps something to look at in terms of a rollout or implementation strategy.
And we, we do offer the pickup for the branches and all that, but it's one of their free pickups that they would use if they wanted to do that. And quite often in the springtime or in the fall, when people are trimming branches and doing those type of things, we will get several requests to come pick that up and we use it as one of their free pickups.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Walker?
I just had a, I want to voice some, some opposition to one thing and I have a question about it also at the same time. But in phase two on page three, you talk about the subsidy that's going, possibly being forced on our residents to do the composting, even if they would rather not do it. But it also talks about other funding sources here and I'm curious, like local grants and everything. I'm curious, how readily available are those to get? Are they often granted or are they a pie in the sky thing? Is it something that is, is easily obtained or is it?
Yes, yes.
But Lori didn't.
Yes, you know, we, when we had our one-on-ones, we did talk about a number of funding sources, one of them being the, the subsidy from other residents. But yes, North Glenn sits here in But yes, North Glenn sits here in the front range in the middle of two grant programs that are relatively, they're state programs, and they're relatively lucrative. They're well-funded because they come from landfill tip fees, and the grant process is not terribly onerous. So that is a likely source. Two different programs, I'd be glad to give you the names. I'd also mention that there are two new pieces of state legislation. One takes effect as early as January of next year, and one is a few years out, both of which mean revenue to the City of North Glenn for programs and activities they're really already accomplishing. So all of those together provide a number of revenue sources that could help offset that Phase Two program.
Would it be enough to offset the, totally, the residents?
It could, it could. Either, you know, the grant programs can be sizable and/or a combination could be put together.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Mayor Protem Wolfert?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of questions for you, Lori. One is, how many carts would be allowed for recycling? Is it just the one cart?
Going forward?
Yeah.
We expect at least two going forward in the new pay as you throw program.
I would think if somebody wanted to do all recycling and take care of their trash some other way, that we would provide up to four, just as we do now. We provide up to four carts now. The problem with providing more than that is the time it takes to dump four or five carts on, and if several people had that. I don't think people would have more than four, but I think that we could probably accommodate up to four as long as they didn't have a trash cart, or three if they still had a trash cart.
Okay, all right, that's good to know. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't an increase. Because I, and to echo Councilmember Condo's pitch and push for increased recycling weekly, I know that by the time the recycling truck comes through my neighborhood, we are just like, in my family, our recycling bins are overflowing, and we have to like hold on to stuff for the next two weeks. And so I, you know, I would expect that as you're encouraging residents to use less trash and recycle more, that there's going to be a need. And so I just really want to push you all to think about that in a deeper way on the front end. The other question was, we've often talked about business recycling on council, and that's been something that previous council members have brought up for years. Is this only residential? Are we ever going to get to a point that we can provide recycling for businesses?
One of the difficulties for us in doing business recycling is our ability to get our trucks in and out of where they're at. In order to do that, we would probably have to retool and get like rear loaders or front-end loaders to be able to go in and get the larger cans that pick up from the front. One of the things I would encourage businesses around here to do would be to, instead of having trash cans, was we go to compacters. If they could do it, it would save them money, and it would save a lot on their transportation costs. I know when I was with the school district, we did a program where we put compacters at all the middle schools and high schools and saved considerable amount of money on that. The other thing is, I would say that I think that's a big bite for us right now because I think if we could go forward with implementing some of these ideas first and show success in that, I think there would be more opportunity for us to look into being able to provide some recycling services for businesses. Businesses right now can use the drop-off recycling centers. We don't card them and see if they're a business or anything like that. We don't turn anybody away. We don't turn other city people away. I know that the one over Northwest Open Space gets frequented by Westminster, and I'd like to send them a bill every once in a while, but I don't think they would pay it. So I do think there's opportunity, but I do think that I would cautious us from eating the elephant and making sure that we have successes in the program and can show that to our constituents, and then move forward with other programs such as composting and possibly going into the business side of things. We don't collect business trash right now either, but I understand that recycling could be a positive for us. One of the things that I will say when I, because I did the same thing at the school district, businesses typically, if they have a recyclable material that is a commodity, they will recycle it themselves because they want the money. So if we offer recycling for a business, we're going to get the stuff that most likely is not going to provide much revenue to us, and we're going to eat some cost, which would be fine as long as we're improving the environment in North Glenn. But we'd have to be cautious on how that impacts our ability to stay neutral without going into the general fund or anything like that. Because right now, sanitation is 100% funded by the fees that people pay for trash.
Yeah, that makes total sense. Do you know how many haulers we have coming into the city for business trash?
I don't right now, but as a part of this, if we move forward, we would seek out to find out and have our businesses report to us who their haulers are and what they're hauling and how much, so that we have a better idea. Right now, the only haulers that come in are for businesses or multifamily. They're the only ones that are allowed in because we have a strict rule about single-family homes have to use the City of North Glenn Trash Service.
Well, maybe some area of exploration for Phase Three. Because it would be really awesome to not have all of that heavy truck pollution in the community. So, yeah, cool. And then last question, can you remind us, and for anybody who's still with us at 1015, what the trash and waste hours are if folks want to drop off yard waste?
At the MNO facility, right now, we are open from 7:30 to 3 o'clock every day, Monday through Friday. And starting November 1st, we will be open the first Saturday of each month until the end of February. And then in March, we start opening every Saturday again with those same hours.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lucman here, Martha?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say that that education piece really stood out for me because I know when we had our conversations, I didn't even know I could get a second recycling cart. And as Mayor Protem said, like by the time that second week rolls around, I just have so much, and I'm very guilty of the Amazon effect, which I believe you mentioned in here. And it adds up, it adds up, and it's hard to get rid of unless you go and drop them out. I'm very grateful for those sites. But also, in a previous board meeting, Mayor Protem and I did a little game in terms of what you can recycle and what you can't. And it was even educational for us to see what we thought we could recycle and we can't. So I believe that's part of what is also part of the goal, right, is to be able to recycle more variety of things that would normally go into trash. Because I know for me, sometimes that's an issue. It's like these little plastic shiny bags that, you know, come with your deliveries. They're hard to get rid of, and they add up. Of course, this is my consumer habits, right, in terms of getting stuff delivered, watching my grandchild. So that's something that is in the works, right? Harder to recycle stuff, you know, like bubble wrap and shiny things, foil. So that's in the future as well to have.
Well, some of those things, I don't think there's a recyclable market for it, so it'll continue to be trash. But I know, Becky, I know that you're working with the green team, and that there are several questions that come through that group a lot. And we'll reach out to our recycling provider to make sure that have there been any changes? Should we update our information that we send out? Like, as I mentioned before, sometimes when people are constant abusers, we'll put a sticker on that shows what you can put in and what you can't. And I'll admit, we probably need to find a better way to communicate that more often and maybe work with Diana in Communications to get more information out and let people know that there are more recyclable carts that you can get that you don't have to pay for, and that we can get them out. And maybe they'll trade a trash cart for a recyclable cart. If that starts happening and we could be effective in the communication and the education of that, I could see where we might be able to, at some point in the near future, tip the scales of going, you know, to recycling weekly versus trash weekly.
That would be amazing.
It would be really nice if we just get everybody that wants to recycle to move into the same area, but I don't know if that's possible.
Even some of the items that we're confusing is just leaving it a little bit liquid and not, you know, rinsing out.
Or whether you rinse it off.
So, yes. And I'm very excited for composting because I think that also can remove a lot of trash as well. The last question I had is assume, let's assume somebody wants two 96-gallon carts, for example, but they don't always fill that second one. Is that, are they still being charged for one? Or is it going to change month by month? Like, they only use one, two months in a row, and then they use two?
I think that would be pretty difficult for us to manage. So they would have to make a decision when they subscribe. This would be a subscription-type service versus buying a cart. They would have to let us know, what do you want? And I would imagine in that first year that we'll have people that say, yeah, I don't really need two carts, I only want one. Then they'll come back and say, I want one big one and a little one. Oh, I need one big one and a medium-sized one, or I just need two mediums. I mean, there's going to be a lot of that that's going on. Hopefully, people can identify what's going on. But I don't see how we could manage if somebody had two full-size carts and they only used half of it, how we would be able to figure that out from a billing standpoint.
It's more like one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just because that is twice the amount of money.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. But I do think that the opportunity, and we probably need to look at, and I probably need to talk to sanitation like Keith and Bridget, who actually do the management of all that, find out how many people really do call in for that extra pickup and whether or not it's being used enough. Because if we promoted that, that would eliminate the need for somebody to have another cart if they only needed it every once in a while. $10, I don't think is too restrictive. So I think that, you know, if you just need it around Christmas or when you had guests and you do it three or four times a year, it's a lot better than paying the full price of a cart all year long.
So can I, I'm going to piggyback on that for a minute. So I'm on page 85, and it talks about the small trash service is seven, medium is 13, and large is 18. Is that per cart?
Yes.
So that is not an additional $2. And so this is a misleading slide. Because it says you go from paying 16 a month to paying 18 a month. But I currently have two large ones.
Right, that would be 36.
So I'm going from 16 to 36. So this slide is not, it's just misleading. Because I looked at it and I was like, oh, well, that doesn't look like.
That's just based on one cart per cost.
Right, so that bothers me. I'll just say that.
That's why we did verbalize it, but you're right. That's absolutely a true statement.
Yeah, it's, yeah, we, yeah, that just bothers me. Because this, I know when I went back to the myths, it's not a myth that it's going to cost people more money, because it's going to cost a few people more money. And so for that to be a myth is also misleading. Monthly fees will go up, mine are going to more than double.
That's a myth that just needs to be put in perspective. You're right. We estimate that 30% of your residents will pay more. They'll pay a little more or a lot more, depending on how much trash need they have, while 70% will decrease. And I do want to underscore that that was analysis that was done in late 2020, early 2021. So those numbers could be a little bit off. Things have happened in the last couple of years. So one of the steps that staff will undertake if this goes forward is a reevaluation of those numbers, checking the recycling market, checking in to make sure if they do need to be bumped up or down, that they're current before you go forward.
Well, and I had expressed this in our one-on-one, but education is more than key. I think education needs to be the driver for this because, per Councilmember Brown earlier tonight, this is change. This is big change, and this could be our Watergate, not the old one, but the current Westminster one. I mean, this is a huge change, and if it is not communicated clearly, it could just completely blow up. And that's a concern I have when I think about, because after we met, I was talking to people, looking at my neighbors, seeing who's doing what. And I'm like, this is, this is going to be a significant change for some families. And it does feel like it's being driven by the small households that are subsidizing, to use your word, everyone else's experience. I think it's going to be, it's going to change a lot of things. And it makes me super nervous. If we can communicate it clearly, let's communicate it clearly. I'm just going to have to swallow a significant increase at my house.
Well, and let me respond by saying there are nearly three dozen communities in the state of Colorado that have moved to pay as you throw. And as I mentioned, nearly 8,000 nationwide. So certainly, North Glenn would not be the first, even in the state, in the front range. In fact, North Glenn actually sits in a more advanced position than most because you already have trash and bundled recycling, you already have that. What we're talking about here is changing the structure of how trash is offered and the pricing signals. So you're much further down the road than many communities who've moved to it in the past. Not to belittle your observation that it's change, and it's a big change for some, and it could be an increase in price for some that's offset by others. But still, it only matters what happens at your household. So you're dead on that there's a change. How staff handles it, the level of communication, the clarity, the flexibility is important. I know Councilmember Goff asked about that, and Rob had a good answer with respect to extra collections. But the expectation fully is that households are going to change their mind the first few weeks and months. Some people are going to be really excited, and they're going to downsize fast, and they're going to realize they're in a world of hurt because they don't have enough trash container space. The expectation is with a phone call, they will upgrade their service. The same is going to happen with the large households that have just a large cart or multiple large carts. Their comfort level in downsizing is going to be slow in coming until they understand, they feel that pricing signal, and they understand that they do have myriad other options for handling their materials that allow them to do that. And it's going to be weeks and months, and some households are going to change their minds a few times. These guys are expecting that and will have flexibility in swapping out cart service levels and changing billing structures.
Well, and I think there's an assumption being made that it's, that there is an option, that I can suddenly stop producing the amount of trash that I produce with two teenagers at my house. I am just going to have to take the extra expense. There's nothing I can do about it unless we start changing where we put our trash, which is why the other myth, I think, is also not a myth. Because I can't just start consuming less or producing less trash. And so I think it's, there's just some things in here that I get, but I think there's a lot of generalizations and assumptions made. I'm seriously concerned about communication in the sense that it can't be how we typically communicate to our residents. It can't simply be that. It has got to be, it has to include a town hall. It has to include maybe even robo-calls and videos and door hangers on every, I mean, because otherwise, this change is going to impact them, and they're going to be angry. There's going to be a handful, you're right. They're going to be like, oh, sweet, now I just need this little teeny cart, and I'm happy because I'm a one-person household and, you know, I throw two things away a week. That's great. That is some of our residents, but it's nobody in my neighborhood. So when I walk around and I talk to people and I see the families and I see, I don't know how many times we get calls from residents saying, hey, there's 12 people living in the house across the street. That is more and more common than these shrinking households. So I just think I'm concerned that this is an accurate representation of our city. And I also wonder, especially when we talked about the sampling of people that are interested in this change, that it's a sampling of people that are like-minded in this way as opposed to a true sampling of our resident. So my fear is that it's going to blow up, and it's going to blow up on us. It's not going to blow up on you. So that's something else to think about.
You know, I agree with what you're saying, Mayor. But this was, this is a response to what the council had asked us to look at and how we would get there. So this is why we hired Lori to look at this. And I would agree that some people are going to be angry. But I got a feeling that what's going to happen in the next five or six years anyway is that the price of dumping out at Tower Road, which has been expanded, I don't know how many times, because when I moved out here in 1983, I drove down into that landfill when I was remodeling houses. And now I drive way up on top. And there are no new landfills that I'm aware of, and I don't know if you're aware of any, that are being approved right now in the state of Colorado. And I have a feeling that we're going to be closer to what they're doing in the east and the Midwest now than we are doing what we are in Colorado. And if they do approve one, my guess is that it's going to be very expensive to drive out to the eastern plains of Colorado to dump it. In my mind, I would much rather be on the front side of this and decide how we as North Glenn want to do this before the state tells us how we're going to do it. That's all I would say. But, and I would agree, some people are going to be angry because, yeah, they create more trash, they probably should pay more for it.
Well, they won't be angry if we communicate it.
No, I agree. I think we have to do an excellent job of providing the information and giving people plenty of opportunity to ask, answer questions or to ask questions and have us answer them.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you very much for saying everything that you said. Jay and I currently have an email in our mailbox about somebody putting trash in a neighbor's trash can. So I can see how this could be, you know. I'm going to tell you straight up honestly, I'm not a proponent of it as it is right now. I am not going to be able to look at my neighbor to this side that had three children move back home with their kids and say, gee, I'm really sorry, but this is what we voted on last night. Nor the one across the street who just had their family size increase. Yes, they produce more trash. And yeah, I could bag my stuff up and take it to this place and this place. And I do recycle, but quite frankly, I work two jobs. And I'm, I guess I'm old-school because I'm insulted that you would think that I'm going to pick my leaves up and take them up in a bag and tear the bag apart and put them in the thing. That really kind of torques my belly button, just so you know. But I'm allowed to have my own opinions and I'm only one of nine people, but I'm not pleased with this at all. I will, like the mayor said, I will accept the added expense. But I'm not jumping up and down and going to be a at this point, I'm not going to be a rah rah sis boom bah on this on this project at all. But I am one of nine people that I'm not happy with. Yeah.
That's great. Mayor Pro Tim Wolfert.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And thanks, Councilmember Brown, for your comments. I definitely share some some of your sentiments. I guess I'm curious, do we know how many trash carts each household has and uses right now? Because it because it seems like it's probably pretty tough to track.
It's very difficult to to track it because we don't own the carts. And so some people just give them to their neighbors. We know how many we've sold since we started tracking it, but we we don't ever get them back. I mean, very rarely does anybody call and say, hey, you want your cart back, you know? They usually just give it to their neighbor. So it, I mean, we could probably do a count, but it would require our trash guys to count it each time they go out to verify it.
I mean, I guess I'm in the place where I'm like, I feel like we need to do that because I know when I drive down my street on trash day, there are at every home, two to three at a minimum trash bins. And so if we're looking at the fees and knowing that, you know, at least in my house, I have two kids and they consume a lot and I wish that it the all of it was compostable. I wish that all of it was recyclable, but it's just not. And so I think to Mayor Leidy's point, the reality is that like we're going to go from paying, you know, our $16 to now $36 a month. And I just I I think really we need to really be clear about whether or not those fees make sense for our community and how much trash our residents are throwing away. Because I I can already I already have the residents in my head that are going to be upset about this. And and yes, I think it is a good direction to move in. But I'm not convinced that we're ready to roll anything out like this. I really want to see what a timeline for rolling the program with out looks like. And before we get to a place where we're charging for smaller carts and doing all of these subscriptions, I want our community to have a minute to to try this, right? A minute to say, hey, I want to try and get a smaller trash cart and I'm going to trade it in now without this whole like subscription service and test out whether or not they can get to where we want them to be or where they feel comfortable financially and, you know, in a way that they're living their lives before we start charging. And I I understand that the behavior change comes with the charging, but I think knowing that this is a really big deal for our community and knowing that Westminster doesn't do this, Thornton doesn't do this. None of the communities around us are doing this. And if we are truly going to model what it looks like to implement this policy, I think that we need to give our residents the the chance to come along with us. And so I guess that's that's my initial feedback. It's let's let's figure out how to roll this out and not just go cold turkey. The other thing, I guess, the other last two comments I'll make is one is I'm I'm nervous about I'm nervous about the folks that do have two carts or three carts and knowing that everybody's really feels feeling the squeeze right now with inflation and and how expensive things are right now. That this just feels like we're just adding on and we're just piling on. And so I think we're going to have to be really, really, really intentional with our education and our communications. And I I want to see that plan before I'm before I'm on board to just full on roll the program out. The last question I had was, how will the dumpster program be impacted? Because I know that that's something that folks really love. They sign up. They get five neighbors to sign up. They get a roll off dumpster. They put all of their stuff in it. Like, how how will that change with this program? It won't. Okay. And and I guess I said that was my last question, my last comment, but truly my last comment is, you know, to Councilmember Brown's point around the leaves and the, you know, the yard waste. We we've we've had a lot of yard waste, right? Especially after some of the storms that have come through. But every time we get out and have time to take care of our yard, we have all of this yard waste and the place that we want to go and take it in Northland is closed. And so we end up with this yard waste that eventually goes into our trash can. And so at like, I think if we're really having a full discussion, we need to figure out how to make those yard waste centers more accessible because 3:00 PM on a Saturday is just not enough. And with the amount of leaves that are about to fall, like, not everybody's going to want to compost their leaves. A lot of folks are going to want to get them out of their yard spaces. So how do we make sure that they can do that and that they don't have to fill up their their trash bins with it? So I'm not I'm not totally against the program. I just think we really have to be intentional in ensuring that we're bringing our community with us. Thanks.
Councilmember Goth.
Thank you. I just want to wrap up by saying that my husband and I have had pretty intense conversations about this proposal. Because, you know, in thinking about the future, the landfill costs that are going to be increasing, those kind of things and just environmental concerns. I'm very much in support of it. And then he is being much more practical, maybe is the way to look at it. But we have two two big trash cans. I don't know in my walking around and driving around the city, I don't know anyone or any place that I've even seen a small one. And I realized there's only 6% of our residents that that have purchased one. But it in order for this program to be successful, there does need to be a lot of community involvement and upfront, you know, input that we get from our residents, education, that kind of thing before we just try to force this on people because it it's going to require a lot of change in behavior. And I don't I don't want people to think that I'm just wanting to, you know, do this, you know, regardless of what, you know, the extra cost that it's going to be for some people because it's going to cost more for us too if we decide to keep ours. But I think it is a worthwhile program and it may turn out to be that the majority of our residents, you know, think think this is a good idea and are willing to, you know, try it out or or make that sacrifice. So positive, but we need lots of community input.
Do not see any more hands.
So, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
A couple of things I just want to reiterate that's in the staff report is that this is a stepping off point. This is not a go no go discussion tonight. I think that the comments that were brought up and the concerns that are on that that both sides of the point have been made is the fundamental question is, does the council wish staff to proceed with this initiative? In that if so, then the robust nature of going out and doing public engagement would be to further gauge what the public's sentiment is toward towards this to sort of allay the concerns that have been brought up about whether people are in support of it, whether people would be against it. Also, we talked about updating the the assessment in terms of rerunning the model. But the the fundamental question, I think, for council to deliberate on is, do you wish us to move forward with this or not?
Well, I think I have a question. So I'm on page 10 of the report. I think it's the timeline. That's my question. So when it says new pay as you throw program, that's a it looks like a now. So that's what I'm trying to figure out. Like when you say if we have support to go forward.
We would go and do a public robot, a public engagement and then following that, we would then come back to you. And then that following step would be is that the rollout phase would be that particular type of timeframe. So the the idea here is tonight is, does council wish us to move forward with further analysis and public engagement or not?
I think I'm with Councilmember Goth in that I'm very interested in the public engagement part of it, for sure. But who else wants to chime in? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree. I think for moving forward, we absolutely need to hear what our residents think about this. That was one of my concerns as well during the interviews, just how much more it would cost. And double is quite a bit. So to tell our residents is $36. It's $18. Yes, it's a change. I absolutely think it's crucial for all of us to support that first.
Councilmember Brown.
I'm going to agree to reach out to the residents, but I don't want you guys to come back here and say, look, we got a survey from 50 residents and here's what those 50 residents said. I don't know how how we can do it. I don't know what, but I don't I I I don't want to see it come back with just like 50 people or, you know, wow, we did really good. We did 100 people. That it's not enough. We need more. We need more information. I mean, I know I'm a Debbie Downer on it and I know that I'm going to have to pay more money. I make really good money. That's not going to affect me at all. No offense, not bragging world. But my mind is just wrapped around the people that don't and do the public engagement, but I don't want. I'm very worried about inflation, how much more expensive things are getting. That, in my opinion, in my humble opinion, this is something we is not a necessity necessity, a necessary expense to put on our people at this at this at this time. But I am willing to say, you know, go out and get some public input, but I just really have a hard time at this at at this juncture where I, you know, where I you're not, you know, my gas is going up, my this is going up, my that is going up. I can't even fill but two bags of groceries at Walmart or, you know, what I used to spend for a month. I'm just not so sure that this added, what I perceive as stress is really what I want personally. It makes me feel very negative. And I just, I think the reason, one of the reasons I feel negative, you know, when the phone starts burning and I just, this makes me very nervous. But, you know, I'm one person out of nine. And I say, go, you can go for the public engagement. But I would strongly suggest this council not look at implementing anything until later into next year, far later into next year, when we get a better gauge on what is happening with our economy and what is, you know, have we managed as homes to stabilize our 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 situation? Not with the country only, but in our own homes where we're trying, many people are trying to budget their money and do things differently. And how their trash is handled is not the number one priority. Sorry. I know. I don't mean to sound like.
I want you to understand something, Councilmember Brown.
You don't care.
This this is this is this is an initiative brought forth by council that we are bringing forward to you. So I really want to I really want to make sure that you guys understand this is a conversation amongst yourselves. We are here as staff to help you figure out what you'd like us to do and how we can go about doing it based on the direction you give. So I don't take anything that you're saying in any way as a negative. It's it's a legitimate concern. That's part of the equation to this issue and it is a complicated issue. That's part of the reason why we wanted to sit down and do the one on ones because we recognize all the challenges that are being discussed and mentioned tonight. So that's part of part of the calculus that staff has put into this to ensure that we're giving you the right information so you guys can have a a good conversation about what to do next.
Jay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I could see us incentivizing the medium and the small trash immediately or as soon as we get the word out. I just think I think of doubling the large size trash. I mean, that would go for for my family, go from $192 to $432. That's an increase of 240 dollars increase. I can see other families not being so readily to accept that right now. So the we got to get the word out, either that's through email list, social media, mail mailing and surveying, things like that about the large trash pickup. But I can see us starting off like incentivizing, telling people that you can start downsizing now. Maybe that's starts the the mentality shift towards that, towards our goal. But I don't think the doubling the, you know, how many you have, just I don't think I don't think people are going to really go for that in North Glenn right now. I mean, but but I mean, we have to get it out. But if we can incentivize first, I think it'll be easier for our constituents, our residents to accept that first and then maybe it'll, you know, it'll really create the change we want to see in that downsizing amount of trash. But as as far as the cost, yeah, I can tell a lot of my neighbors will be upset. Can tell you that. Thank you.
Do not see any more hands.
So what is the direction of council?
I think it sounds like like public input.
Yeah, I guess what I'm hearing is I want to have council give consensus on what they would like us to see. Because our objective with this is that if if council decides to move forward with us to put together an engagement exercise is that our 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 plan was to come back to you in December with an update to that based on based on the guidance that you provide tonight. So the idea being is is that we would lay out a roadmap of what that public engagement would look like. And and to Councilmember Browns, and I think yours, Mayor, is, you know, a statistically significant survey is something we can do, but it is not cheap. But we can put that together and and figure out how to make that work. But all of this feedback that you're providing, I just want to make sure that we're all in consensus and moving forward because there's been a lot of back and forth about where individual positions. And I want to make sure that when we come back, we're we're coming back with the right information.
Well, I think I heard that public input is needed. And so I I my recommendation would be that it's a robust engagement. So even our citywide satisfaction survey doesn't hit the mark. And then, you know, possibly targeting the single family homes since that seems to be who's receiving the biggest impact here. I mean, I'm not, I don't know. I heard that I think everyone, I actually I didn't hear from Ashley. What are you thinking?
Well, I've been sitting back listening because I'm one of those households that will save some money. But I realized that's that's probably not the majority. I definitely support robust public engagement. Maybe slowing down a little bit to make sure we take the time to to gather that information. You know, I don't know if I was part of the council that asked for this to be looked into or not. I honestly can't remember. But I I mean, I I appreciate the work that's been put into this and I think this is a a great way to move forward eventually, but maybe maybe we just don't rush it. I guess that's kind of where I am.
Well, that was even more confusing, wasn't it? Because then I'm going to then I'm going to look at you and go, well, how much is it going to cost us for public engagement? Do we have that in the budget and are we set to go?
We'll try to do as much public engagement in house as possible. So we'll pull our heads together and figure out how we can do more a different, more direct approach with our households to get input in an effort. And and if we don't get enough input, that's that's a data point, right? And maybe we do. So we'll come back with you and with ideas like Brooke said and.
Well, and I I would also recommend that it's a little more specific than, hey, do you support composting in our city? Because that's not all of this. So it that this is a lot to consume. So I I mean, just trying to take it all in and make a clear opinion. I mean, I think it's it's probably going to take a budget of some amount to to figure it out and to do it well. I don't know, maybe bring forward some options.
We're not even going to answer your questions because we don't know how to.
So to recap what I heard.
I know, try to tell us.
Don't start it until after the first.
We will come back. We will come back in December with a game plan for you guys to react to on how we might go out and reach out to the community to to gauge whether or not that's sufficient to meet your expectations to identify the concerns that you brought up tonight. And we will also bring back a a recommendation to do an eval, a reevaluation of the cost model so that we will have informed information when we go out.
Great. That was really good. Well done. That was some paraphrasing.
I I don't think so.
Yeah, so it is. Yeah, we are late.
Yep. So the additional information that we didn't cover is a little bit more about some of our programming, but also about the composting program, which in essence is another layer to this conversation that in order to do curbside composting would require a subsidy across the board. That would otherwise be another layer of cost associated with this. In order to do that, the challenge with with curbside composting is is that those who those who would voluntarily participate, it would probably be cost prohibitive for them, because it wouldn't be market-supported for us to provide that service, because it would essentially price it out of, out of an expectation of people wanting to do it. That's, that's a nutshell of that. So.
Great.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got our direction.
Thank you. And I'm fairly certain, it is almost 11 o'clock. City Manager Guyer, I think there's a request to move the final item?
Yes, we let the consultants go home. So we cannot have you hear that item this evening.
Okay.
We'll reschedule it.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Our study session is adjourned.